Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us in person and virtually. This public hearing of the redistricting commission in District 1 will now come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, I'll call the roll. I'll begin with Daisy Castro. I'm sorry, Daisy Castro.
Present.
You, Jonathan Brunz.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lenka Wright.
Present.
BJ Batum. Sylvia Alvarez.
Present.
You, Freddie Sidbury. Andrew Ditliksen. Ramon Martinez.
Present.
And Adina Cardenas here. Thank you, Gloria Collins. Are you up for him?
Great. Before we get started, we have some information for those requiring preferder services.
Sorry, I'm used to having two monitors.
Okay, great. Today, we are holding a public hearing on communities of interest in San Jose. And I will go ahead and give the floor to our consultant redistricting partners to lead the hearing.
Go ahead, Sophia. And when you present, can you speak up so our speaker can broadcast to the room? This is our, I just want to announce real quick. This is our first hybrid meeting out in the wild and not at City Hall. So things might be a little clunky. Just raise your hand if you're having any issues in the Zoom meeting hearing, and we can ask the person to speak up. Okay, go ahead, Sophia.
Okay, great. Can you guys hear me?
That's a whole issue here oriented all towards Zoom. I just.
Not nodding.
Wait, wait, Sophia, Sophia. Sophia, stop. I have a member of the public. We're trying to move the speaker so he can hear it better.
Okay. Oh, go ahead. Okay, I know there's a lot of coordination when it comes to hybrid meetings. So thank you to the San Jose staff and the commissioners. My name is Sophia Garcia. I'm the GIS and outreach director with Redistricting Partners. So throughout this process, you will see myself, Paul Mitchell, or a number one of my colleagues who will be presenting and walking you through this process we call redistricting. Make sure it works. And so today, we'll be going over a number of different high-level, just like touchstones of what redistricting is. And we'll really focus this meeting on communities of interest and how the community can be involved in that process. So the redistricting commission for the city of San Jose is a 10-member commission that was appointed by the board. And I see that we have some commissioners here with us today on the Zoom. So excited to see you all. The agenda, we will go over redistricting basics. We will do a quick review of the redistricting advisory committee. We'll review traditional redistricting principles. But the bulk of today's presentation, we will do a focus on communities of interest. What does that term mean? Some examples. And we'll go over the many ways that members of the public can submit their community of interest testimony. We'll do a map tool demonstration after the presentation. And then we'll also talk through a way that the public can sort of think through their community of interest of public testimony. And we also have a slide on the public hearing schedule. There has been a redistricting 101 end-up presentation that was given to the city of San Jose Redistricting Advisory Committee. So we will, I will just be quickly going over those traditional redistricting principles. But if you want to get more information on any one of those concepts, I urge you to go back and look at the presentation that is on the city of San Jose website. And there's a lot of materials there if you'd like to dive in deeper. So what is redistricting? Redistricting is the process of adjusting district lines every 10 years after the release of the US Census. The well-known examples are congressional and state legislative districts. But local governments must also go through this redistricting process. So normally, the US Census data would have been released at the beginning of March. But we're in a really different time. And we're actually not going to get the census data until we'll get a file next week. But we won't be able to start the mapping process for another couple of weeks. So the city of San Jose must also go through this redistricting process as it did in 2011. And this process, we are working to ensure that the supervisory districts are rebalanced after we get those new census numbers. Beyond creating districts of equal population, which we will go through in our redistricting principle criteria, redistricting also serves to empower local communities and preserve voting rights. The redistricting commission, the board appointed a 10-member advisory commission to assist in conducting community outreach. The goals of this commission are to conduct community outreach hearings, which is what we're doing here. So we have some people virtually, and I see a good number of folks in person. Also, that camera moving is kind of cool. So we're able to see throughout the room. And they're also here to help identify communities of interest from the public. And then they will present a recommended map to the council. So the traditional redistricting principles, these are here to serve to prevent a district from becoming a gerrymander. And these are a number of criteria that have been used nationally and upheld in courts. And this is a ranked criteria that the body has to follow when they're going through their redistricting process. And so that number one is equal population of relative size. And when we talk about relative size, we're talking about people, not citizens. So we're looking at the census data. And the census data doesn't collect citizenship. So we're looking at the total population count. We're not looking at number of eligible voters. We're looking at everyone who was counted in that US Census. And when we say equal, yeah, equal size, there is a little bit of wiggle room that the, that the commission will have when they are looking at some final maps. And that is a 10% total deviation. And we go through that more in that longer redistricting 101 presentation. But that is there to allow for some room for the final body to look and evaluate the other criteria. So beyond relatively equal size, there's contiguous, which means that districts shouldn't hop or jump. Another way that you can think about contiguous is can you draw a map without picking up your pen? So I think there's some placemats there. Or when you're looking at the map, can you draw your map with one single stroke, making sure that everyone is together? Maintaining communities of interest is something that we will go further into in another slide, but it is a criteria that the final body has to really look at. There's this new law in California called the Fair Maps Act, which really highlights and puts maintaining communities of interest and minimizing their division as a high criteria. Following city, county, local government lines is something that we can look at. So look at existing lines, existing data, and then keeping districts compact. So California has a definition that says that jurisdiction cannot go and bypass a nearby population to get faraway population. And so that's an example of compactness. So trying to get the population that's nearby instead of going over a freeway, or jumping over a park, or moving online to get some population far away. And again, this is just a high touch of redistricting criteria. And if folks want to dive deeper and hear for questions, but you can also look at that presentation that we gave a while ago. So communities of interest, that's the bulk of the reason why we're here. That's a big piece of the outreach right now. And communities of interest is about bringing like-minded people together for representation. Communities of interest are the building blocks of districts. And a community of interest can include ethnic and language minorities and other groups. It's important for the commission and the final body to remember and everyone in the public that communities of interest are subjective and that we want to remember to remain open-ended and inclusive as possible. We all are a part of different communities. We all work in a different place, recreate in multiple places, have different racial, ethnic backgrounds. And so we're thinking about communities of interest. We want to keep an open mind about people who are coming forward to testify. Communities covered by the Voting Rights Act are, some examples are Latinos, Asians, African-Americans. And while communities of interest may include race, it cannot be the predominant factor in drawing district boundaries unless there is Section 2 of the Federal Voting Rights Act is invoked, which will require legal counsel to direct us to do that. So that is something to think about as a consideration. And so when we're thinking of communities of interest, you can sort of think as Latinos. But maybe what is another thing that besides their, their race kind of brings that group together? And we have a couple of thought questions to help folks sort of think through to get to that point. So there's a lot of different things that could be communities of interest. You have historical communities, neighborhoods. If there's a neighborhood file in the city of San Jose, a school district could be a communities of interest, homeowners or renters, media market. So there's just a wide variety of what people can come forward and tell the commission about. There are some things that we need to consider that are not a community of interest. Preventing a district from becoming a gerrymander is what we're hoping to avoid. And the Fair Maps Act, which is that new California law that is first in place for this 2021 cycle, prohibits some groups from being considered as a community of interest. So this is different from the 2011 redistricting or redistricting process. And one of those is political party affiliation. So a group of Democrats, Republicans, or independents cannot be considered as a community of interest. Incumbents cannot be considered as a community of interest and political candidates. So if people come forward with this testimony, the commission and the final body are disallowed from using that as a community of interest as a criteria for their final map. Also, some things to consider that are a little bit difficult in terms of the mapping criteria is groups of similarly minded people who do not share a geographic location. So at the end of the day, we are talking about maps. We are talking about geography. And if it is like a county-wide group that doesn't have a cluster in an area, that may make it difficult. So a good way, if there's a county group, to maybe come and testify with a couple of different areas that are around the city or the county. And communities of interest, yeah, that are county-wide are a little bit difficult to map, especially because we're thinking about communities of interest in terms of not splitting them, and you have to have a compact district. And so those are just two things that may make it a little bit difficult. And so we've gone through the base definition, some of the things that are not allowed, and then some pieces that may make it difficult. And so these are three, three questions that we urge you all to sort of think through when you're coming forward to give your testimony online, in person, or to draw a community of interest map. So the first one is, does your community have a shared culture, characteristic, or bond? So what is the thing that kind of brings your community together? The second one is that geographic component. So is the community geographic in nature? Is the community able to be mapped? So are there streets that bound your community? Do you guys congregate around a park? Is there an old, a community, a neighborhood that you are bounded by? What are the, what are the kind of geographies that can be mapped? If you are giving verbal testimony, it's really helpful to give a specific street. And of course, if you're submitting a map, then we're able to see and sort of get what, overly what you intended for us to understand. And the third one is to describe the community's relationship with the jurisdiction and how it is affected by policy decisions made by elected officials. So how does your community, how is it impacted by the final jurisdiction policies? So what are the things that you, what kind of policies do they pass? Or budgets are they in charge of that really impacts your community? So those are three things to sort of think through. And to help with that, we have sort of an exercise here. And if folks online want to amuse themselves and share their answers, or I can kind of see people in the public, if you want to raise your hand. So these are just meant to be interactive, but it's okay to sort of nod or, or just sort of walk, we can walk through this together. So a group of renters who live downtown testifies to the city's redistricting commission. Would this be considered as a community of interest? Would a group of renters be considered as a community of interest? What do people think? I see a couple nods in the Zoom chat. Those who are nodding. Yes, so this group of residents can easily be mapped in a distinct area, and they share a common policy interest, which can be addressed through legislation or public services. So definitely, a group of renters can definitely be a community of interest. So the next one, a historically recognized town dating back to the late 1800s, but now has a minimal population, is within the lines of a county. Should the redistricting commission prioritize this historical town when drawing their map? What do people think? There's some like, maybe. So it can be. Historical communities are recognized as communities of interest and should be considered when drawing maps. We can also think of a historical community as potentially, if there's a map on redlining or some historical document that are a part of the jurisdiction. And those can definitely be something that the, the commission and final body thinks about. So historical, like if you have like an old town or yeah, any older map that the community wants to bring forward can definitely be thought of as a community of interest. So they get a little harder. So a group of dog owners living in the suburbs banded together to push their local elected officials to put in a dog water fountain in their dog park. Would their commission consider this as a community of interest? So would dog owners who utilize a public space be considered as a community of interest? What do people think? A few sound like maybes. So it can be. This is a group of people in a shared geographic location who have similar needs. This is also something to think through because there are areas in the jurisdiction that have census blocks with zero population. So parks, or if you have any stadium, or any, like, any pieces of land where people use, but no one lives there. And so those all have to be placed into districts. So where are you going to put the schools? Where are you going to put the parks is something to also consider. And who sort of utilizes those, those like common areas the most? So we have dog park people out there, or I don't. It's hard because cats, I never see those out in public. But if there's, yeah, like a pool or something, people can come forward and talk about that. So statewide group of people who are fans of the San Francisco Giants testify to the redistricting commission. Is this a community of interest? What do people think? So this one is, is not. It's important that a community of interest is in a distinct area enough to draw on a map. So this group overlaps through the entire state. And it's unlikely that any body has any say over this issue. So if there was some folk who, if there was like a baseball league at a specific park in your jurisdiction, and they had issues with a specific park, then that could be an example of a community of interest. But anything that is like county-wide or statewide, it falls in. Because it's difficult to be mapped, so that second criteria. So these are just some fun kind of thought pieces for, for people to think about. But there are multiple ways that the public can submit their public testimony. And there are community of interest forms. And I believe those are online and might be available in person for those of you who are there in person. And in terms of map submissions, right now, we are still in that community of interest mapping phase. So we don't have that data yet, but we are getting it very soon, which is really exciting. And so the public is welcome to submit any communities of interest maps throughout the entire process. And as soon as we get the 2020 data, then the online mapping tool and the placemats, the paper maps will be moved over and we'll put that census data in. And so then the public can start drawing district plans or one specific district, and you can submit those to the commission. So we will keep you updated about when we, when we get that final data. And this is almost over, and then I can do the tutorial or do lean on staff if they want to go to public testimony. But I will do a district R demonstration for you all, showing you the specific tool that the, that San Jose has decided to go with. There are some placemats there available for you all. So you can draw your community of interest for the city of San Jose. And there's some information on that. And you can put your name and email if you'd like. And you are free to keep those. They're, they're pretty cool. I have a couple of from where I live. And then the staff will just send us a picture so that we can map and add any of your community of interest testimony onto our, on our online platform. So that is another way that you all can submit your testimony. And there are still a number of outreach meetings happening. There's one later today, I believe. Yes, later today at 2:00 PM. So those who weren't able to make it this morning, maybe wanted to do their morning routine, they're available to meet at 2:00 PM later today. And Paul Mitchell, our president, will be here to present for that one. And we have quite a few others for the public to have an opportunity to learn about the process and then submit, submit any testimony. That is a link to the city of San Jose redistricting website. So again, there's a lot of great information on there. It's, I encourage folks to look at that after this meeting or in between for any other information. And that is the, the end of my presentation. So I will lean on staff if you would like me to go straight into the map tool demonstration or.
Yes, please just go with the map demonstration.
Okay, I can do that. Let me put that up. Okay, great. So if, the link is on the city of San Jose website, but you can also go to districtr.org/California. And you will see the page that has something where you can draw districts, and also another place where you can draw communities. So we're in that draw community phase. And if you click on that button, and you have the option to click statewide, counties, or cities. And so we have a San Jose in there as a city. Right about the top, we're going to click San Jose. And then it's going to redirect us to the city boundary. So we have the city of San Jose boundary right here. There's a couple of really familiar icons that I'm sure people being online this past year have become familiar with. So there is the, the hand tool, which will allow you to drag the screen anywhere that you want. You have the, the draw or paintbrush tool. And you can make your paintbrush, have it be small. You can say, I want, I have a really big community. So I'm going to draw, grab a big chunk, or you can have it be smaller. So let's zoom into an area of the city. And we're just going to start drawing some areas so that people can have an idea of how this works. So I'm going to make my brush size maybe about 18. And then you can just start clicking. And then the areas that you click will turn a color. And this is grabbing it by census block. So all those, these small geographies are how we'll draw the final map because we have to use it based on the census population data. And we'll have the information based on those, those smaller units of geography. So that's what we have there. Once you have the area that you're happy with, you can go ahead and name it. So I will put. Home area. And if you want to go through those three examples or add more description, you can do that in the describe your community box. You can add as many communities of interest as you want. You click on that plus button, and then it'll change the color. And now you're able to add another community of interest. And you could do the same thing here with naming your community. And now you will see all of the communities of interest that you have drawn in the drop-down button. We talked about parks earlier today. So if there's a specific place that you want to add for the commission to look at, you can click on this important places, click on the pin drop and add. And now you'll be able to add a specific point. You're able to do the same thing with this as well. And name this specific place, and then add more descriptions. Similar to the, being able to select specific areas, you can add as many of the important places as you want. You can go ahead and add all of the parks if you'd like. And that will also have the drop-down menu there as well. The data layers gives you some information on the areas that you picked. You can also see total population. You can see different ethnic populations to sort of see where people live in the city of San Jose. You can also see voting age population. These data layers, we see will be used, tend to be used more in the phase where people are drawing specific district plans. Uh, but this information is still available for the community of interest. Here is where you can see the breakdown of your specific communities of interest, and then when it moves over to drawing districts, that'll be the district phase. The other button's up the top, um, if you want to erase, if you are like, that's not a part of the area that I want, you click on the erase button, and similar to the brush stroke, you can make it larger or small. And then you just click on the areas that you want, if you want to get rid of. The search tool here, you're able to look at, um, population and citizen voting age population. Um, so they, the, the main things where people will work in will be the hand tool, the brush tool, and that erase. When you're happy, uh, with your map and you want to submit it, you can click the save button. And then you can, um, tag it and name it, because this is a test run, I'm just gonna do, like, eight slash, let me just, and test. And, and then it'll be saved on to the, the city of San Jose Districter site. You can also, um, if you want to go back and check out the plan that you made, copy the URL into a new, um, web tab. And then it'll take you directly, you know, it'll show all of the changes that, that you have made, um, to your specific plan. You can also, um, print your plan as a PDF, if you want to send it in that way, or there's other, like, online files where you can, uh, where you can send your map, um, to the commission. So that is the, the Districter, um, specific for city of San Jose, and that link should be up on the city of San Jose website as well. So that is Districter. Okay.
Hi, this is Tony. I'm just gonna share the, um, city redistricting website that shows that link. So if you want to draw a community of interest, you can go to the city's webpage, go to the city clerk's office webpage, and click redistricting 2020. We have communities of interest here. Um, and then there's the, it's in multiple languages, and then the draw your community of interest will take you, um, well, takes you to this back. I'm gonna, I'll fix that to, to District R. I can fix that right now, in fact. So you can either do the map, or, or we'll, we'll have it on that website within five
Thank you, Sophia. Are there any questions from our commissioners? So we'll go ahead and, uh, open the floor for public comments on communities of interest. Um, we'll start first with the individual here in person, and then we want to, uh, folks, um, joining us virtually. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. We'll go ahead and get started, um, here. We'll move on to, um, virtually, and Tony, whenever you're ready, we can, uh, talk to a speaker.
If any attendees want to speak, please raise your hand. No hands raised. We have no hands raised?
There are, there are no hands raised. Then we will go ahead and move on to item three, uh, the public comment open forum section. This is the time for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Uh, the forum act, it commits the commission from discussing any item that is not agenda-ed. Each speaker will be given two minutes. Will the, he's announcing the public speaker.
Do you wish to speak? And I have no hands raised on this.
If you have no hands, we will move on and adjourn the meeting. This meeting of the redistricting commissioners, uh, public hearing is now adjourned. Thank you for joining us.